Twenty twenty-three, let's rise for a prayer. I'll say the prayer and Mr. Barrett, could you do the pledge of allegiance?
Gracious Father, give us all good graces. We come to you, oh Lord, thank you for your many, many blessings. We thank you for this opportunity to serve. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for this city. We thank you for the mayor and all the city council. May they all continue to be blessed by the Lord. May they all make decisions in a better manner for the city of Biloxi. We ask all in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
A lot of arrows.
A lot of arrows. I mean, the motion to amend the agenda.
A mode.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? All in favor? Six, zero. You oppose? Okay, five, one. Five, one. Motion, carry. Carry.
Paul.
Paul Tisdale, Dr. Paul Tisdale.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting five T resolution authorizing submission of a grant to Mississippi Development Authority for Point Cadet Marina. Substituting five C C resolution authorizing submission of a grant to Mississippi Development Authority for Sherman, Canan Commercial Dock. Substituting five G G, the exhibit only, for resolution authorizing lease agreement with lavish salon for Creole Cottage. Adding five N N resolution authorizing the purchase of Microsoft Office three sixty-five license for email. Adding five O O resolution authorizing expenditures to the Orokeye Museum of Art Birthday Festival in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion, subject agenda is amended. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, I need a second. Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? Hey, five, one. Dr. Paul Tisdale. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It was a great prayer today, too. So I'll try to be as equally as fast. But I do welcome everybody. This is the first July meeting and I think we had a good fourth and a lot of the activities that we had a great weekend. Dear Island, well, it was okay. But you do have in front of you, as part of the mayor's report, is this revenue worksheet. And it compares twenty-three to what we're projecting in twenty-four. One thing to note, the twenty-three projections, I think we'll meet the twenty-three projections. And that was a pretty aggressive set of revenue numbers. And I think Diane and the accounting folks in meeting with, I guess they have my lower taxes. I think we enjoying a little increase in SS valuation. So there's some increases in the abilorm taxes. But bottom line, it's about the same, which is still a pretty aggressive gaming numbers as well as sales tax numbers are the big hitters. So that would be for your review. If you have any details, we'll get it in detail and go to any kind of revenue questions that you might have in our next workshop. So bottom line, it's again aggressive, but we feel like it's flat from last year. But it was a good year last year, or twenty-three was a good year. So and that, I think it concludes my report. Credit card, yeah, please pass. Let the records reflect the expenses, the Biloxi travel credit card on the minutes.
All right.
And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay, we have no departmental reports, council reports, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions there. We received a letter from the Harrison County Jail system, the sheriff. I know we having a problem with that now because we having a hard time putting people in jail. People, and they took out some of these smaller misdemeanors. But you know, you can't send a signal out there to anybody that's already shoplifting during the else wrong. I mean, we have to do something. I don't know what we need to do. Do we need more jail cells? I don't know. Maybe we have to. Well, can I just let the crooks and people like that get away with everything and say, oh, we, it's okay. Can't go in the store and just shoplift all you want and you don't do anything.
Catch and release, I think, is what, you know, what you're alluding to with regard to that. But yeah, it is a problem. We've been working together, trying to figure out a solution. You know, I think what we understood was that the facility is under manned at this point in time. Chief, jump in if you see anything. But there's also, the reason why it's under manned is because of, I guess, the number of state prisoners that are there. If we didn't have those state prisoners there, there would be some allocation. You know, again, Biloxi is twenty-four point something percent of the county. And the way we look at it, we need about twenty-four percent of that number of beds. So I guess our move is to express that to the state. I've talked with our state representatives and you know, that's something that could help us out. We're not blaming anyone other than they, it's cheaper for the state to put the prisoners down here, but it's causing us issues. And what you're saying is our policemen are frustrated about having to put people back on the street after, you know, an arrest and sends the wrong signal. But I think we, I think the frequent flyers are getting the message now that they're going to be going to jail. Is that right, Chief? If you want to, if you care to comment.
We've done quite a few things to try to curb some of that since the jail, some of them they won't take. So we're holding them at the P D now for longer. It's manpower intensive, but we're doing that. We can hold them up to six hours, eight if we have to. And that's what we've been doing. So it's not just walking and walk out anymore.
Well, let me ask you a question. They said they have a facility, but they're not using it because it's not staffed. Do they have an access set that need to be staffed? I'm talking about the county sheriff department.
The last time I talked to the sheriff about the staffing, they were down seventy. Seventy corrections officers.
No, I'm talking about the building they're not using. It's not staffed, the building itself not staffed.
And there was, I think, a juvenile detention facility that was being used or not being used because of.
I think he's talking about the work center.
Work center, yeah.
They spent a bunch of money in the work center. From my understanding, it's been completely redone and they don't accord with the sheriff. They don't have the staff to operate the work center. So it's, there's really nobody there.
Well, now they funded by the county. And I'm like, the state, that's their problem. We need to take care of down here, Harrison County. That's what we need to take care of.
Like the mayor has said, I know that, you know, we've got our representatives working on that because I think we all feel the same that the state needs to come pick up their prisoners and put them in prison where they need to be and take them out of the county jail. That would help a lot. I know it'd help the sheriff a lot if they would do that.
Right. Yeah. Well, I just think it's something we need to keep addressing until we get something resolved out of this. Because it's not good to me.
It's a challenge and you know, we've been very innovative in going to Stone County, some of these other folks that, so we're searching, got some possibilities. But I think the solution is the state gets those folks out of that facility. We'll be in better shape and the sheriff will be in better shape to help us and putting the bad guys, you know, in a situation where they won't be bad anymore.
I appreciate that. We just have to stay on top of that. Another thing we had, now this is something different. Thank you. You go sit down, thank you. We're going to check with Rachel and Mike on their favorite place, Yules. They're having a big party Thursday. It's like a ribbon cutting at Yules Place on July the thirteenth.
I'm not sure. Yules on.
Got me.
Yeah, Carsway.
Carsway, yeah.
Not aware of anything.
Okay, well, probably y'all know that. Look, he knows.
He knows. I know because I'm probably coming to pick you up. But I think it's a triple ribbon cutting, Yules and two other new Biloxi businesses. And I think they're just having the Biloxi Bay Chamber Party Meeting there at Yules this Thursday, sounds right.
That's it, Thursday, five o'clock, five thirty, something like that. So I mean, that is, there were two other ones listening. But I mean, that's a good place to be. It turned into a nice stop where people like going there. And I noticed Captain Al, you know, he added a big deck to his. And I think maybe we ought to do that at Yules. Add that deck, make it bigger for the outside. They love that sitting there watching the boats and that. That's a good thing. All right, that's all right. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Demme.
Ms. Labata, I know I got an email from you yesterday and I haven't had a chance to read it. Does that, by chance, have an update on paving?
So we've repackaged our paving into two separate packages. This time, normally we go for a unit price. We package it in the downtown streets and the sun kissed and a few, actually one will mark the street. Skeet out for right now. Into two separate bid packages, we received bids on those on August sixteenth. We're hoping that'll entice some contractors to bid that will actually want to do the work for us.
Okay, any update on the core of engineers and underwater vegetation issues?
No, I have not met with Seymour on that, but I will. I'll have a meeting with them and get an update for you.
There was a mitigation opportunity.
Yes, that's what they've been hearing. I think they were working on that through Jackson County and they were going to kind of take that and do that for us as well.
And I think we've identified around Goat Island, there would be a potential to carve it out. So whatever acreage, I have no idea, number of acres that they've identified when we're trying to do the dredging.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either, but I can find out.
But it seems to be something that we need to pursue and take advantage of because dredging needs to be done. But you know, it, they throw some regs on it that not always cool.
Yes. It's in the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, a laundry list. A couple of questions for Chief Miller related to the county jail. And you made, I don't know if you have this information, not about how many state prisoners are at the county jail.
You know, I don't remember. I was told that a while back and it was quite a few, but I don't remember.
Would it be dozens?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think.
Boy, yeah, it approaches a hundred, I think.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
Hundred. Was there any reason why we couldn't maybe on our next agenda have a resolution basically to send to, is your antenna up, Peter? To our governor or whoever, somebody and just say, hey, come on.
Commissioner, yeah, exactly. We need some relief. I mean.
Right, I don't know if that would help, but at least we're on record and maybe we get some support from other cities here on the coast there in the same boat that we are. And I know that we used to contract, I think, with Stone County and they no longer do that. Are there any other jails, I mean prisons? No, there aren't.
No.
Okay.
We've looked, believe me.
I think we probably bought up because we've got an up-to-date jail and that's why the state prisoners are down here and the rates are, you know, the other jails in the county are not as good as ours and they prefer our jail.
Yeah, and it's just cheaper.
Yeah, cheaper than it's right. We're subsidizing it and that's not right.
That's right.
No, well, let's just lift that rock and send a resolution and let the media hopefully pick it up wrong. But I don't know what else to say about that. Thank you, Chief. Like I said, a laundry list, some things. I know we dealt with loud, I got calls on the loud music scraping the coast. And I know we've dealt with the Colosseum to some extent on the music and the noise and everything. And it may be that our ordinance is too vague. Maybe we need something a little more cut and dried, measurable. Something that would allow us to do a better job of cracking down on these folks and the loud music. I don't know where we are with the Colosseum and it's not just the Colosseum. But I'm just saying, we need to work on that. That's an issue. I don't know if the other councilmen hear from constituents, but I do. Particularly around these events that are, that kind of are in the general vicinity of the Colosseum.
Well, along those lines, the chief has been, just for scraping, I think we were up about two hundred incidents that weekend, wasn't it something like that? We went from about eighteen hundred to two hundred or two thousand. And then it was identifying the cost, just, you know, that we have to assume for the events that happen there. So it's a special event that impacts, you know, everybody as far as budgetary situation. So we've been, I think, you know, you've been pulling those numbers together. We've assigned, counties assigned some BS codes.
Very close to what it costs. And this is between the police department, the fire department, and public works. It's going to be around a little over ninety thousand is what it costs for that two and a half day event.
Yeah, for scraping the coast.
Yes, sir.
And that's just scraping.
That's just that two and a half days. Really, we'll call it three days, but it's closer to two and a half days.
But on a list of things to do, maybe one of them is revise the noise ordinance. Next thing, the IP parking paving lot. I'd mentioned that, I don't know, five or six weeks ago, I think. And at some point, it'd be nice to have that paved. We were waiting on, I think it was Quavis and Fayard Street, the work to be done. And that's been done for quite a while.
The general manager, I was going to have a conversation with him. You know, there was, there was in a.
Motor.
Conference that was.
Yeah, motor, not a motor home, but a.
So manufactured homes, that was a big event.
That's what I was thinking of.
In order for them to come back, this, you know, this is the first time since the pandemic they had this. And they had mentioned that they would like that parking lot where they assemble, how many?
Thirty something homes that they put together?
Forty.
Forty homes that they actually sold and showed, so.
Probably sell more if that lot was paid, looks so much nicer, get more people out.
Yeah.
They more or less challenged us to get it.
Yeah, they want, if they want us to come back or they want, if we need to get them back, we need to get it paved.
That'd be great if we, if we can keep pushing that. The process for issuing boil water notices on Big Lake Road, we had a contractor come in, do some boring to replace, I think, some of those transite water lines to residences. And move, I guess, they wanted to tap into the water line that runs on the east side of Big Lake, on the west side that runs from the Lakeview, whatever. And they're always, that controls the residences on the west side of Big Lake. But in making that change, they, I guess, compromised a water line or something. And some of the residents got boil water notices and some didn't. My understanding is that it's the contractor's responsibility to hang those notices and go door to door. And I don't think, I heard they didn't have any notices on hand, so they did the best they could. But I had residents call me five or six days later saying, what about the boil water notice? We never saw anything or has it been lifted yet? And in checking, it had been lifted, but I'm thinking, in checking, I think it's with Public Works. If you go to their website, there's a link at the top that says boil water notices, but it's not kept up to date. But I'm thinking it would be helpful if that would be kept up to date or whether we could send something through Be Alerts and just note, hey, in these neighborhoods, just some way to do a better job to reach as many people as we can because there are several elderly people and they're not traveling much out of the house. So they don't know whether we're under a boil water notice if they don't get a notice on their door. So that's all. Marquee sign. How we doing at Civet and Highway ninety? Is that up and going? Is it, is it functioning? And we get some revenue from that sign every month, right?
It's, and it goes up every year and he's, he's caught up. He's in compliance with the terms of his contract right now.
Right, but, but basically there's nothing advertised there. It's, it's his sign, correct?
Correct.
And how long is it his sign, forever and ever, as long as?
Term of the contract.
And what, do we know when that ends?
I can't without looking.
Roughly. Beg your pardon. Ten more years. So we have a sign up there that really there's nothing there. We're missing a great opportunity. I mean, I know we're getting paid, but we're missing a great opportunity to advertise some things with the city.
Restriction, it's only to advertise for the event at the stadium. That was the, I think, is that not right? Is that not the restriction?
Right, well, and that would be great if they put, if he put something up there because we get, if he can, if we can increase the attendance, then we get a little more moolah, as they say. So I'm, okay. But.
The electronic components needed to get the board up are on order. We're told by the owner of the board.
Right, and he has to, he has to keep up the maintenance and all that stuff. It's his responsibility. Okay, water fountain at Pennzoil? We could advertise that on the sign if it was working. We could let everybody know when that's going to happen. Do we know when that's going to happen? You know, we have a water faucet for the dog park at the, over there by Margaret Sherry, but we don't have any water source for kids at Pennzoil Park.
I actually have an update for you on that. We actually finally got.
Excuse me, get close to the mic, I got to hear this.
I'll try not to yell into it.
Thank you, Kristi.
We actually finally got our two quotes. We are waiting on, we submitted the P O or the requisition for the P O today. So I should have that back pretty soon. Soon as we get the faucet here, we can schedule our repair place contractor to go in and run the water line and install it.
An estimate on how, six weeks, eight weeks?
You know, I really don't know. I didn't look, but I will look and see. Historically, things have been taken a long months to come in. So I hate to even guess.
All right, I have to take a deep breath. I'm so excited right now. Thank you, Kristi.
You're welcome.
Fire station number five, I know we're working on the design. Is that?
Design's about a thirty days out.
Okay.
And I would have to guess, Kristi could correct me if you're wrong, I'm wrong, but we're probably within sixty days we'll be able to advertise.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have. I almost went into AFib there for a moment. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good luck, Tisdale. Mr. Glavin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a long list as well. It's been a while since we met, you know, the end of June and here we are. I hope everybody had a safe fifth and enjoyed the fireworks, both in the sky and on the island over there. But everything worked out in the end. Get started on this. M M L convention met, it was a really good convention. I just want to point out that Peter Abid and I attended a couple of seminars together or workshops, particularly on the brownfield grant opportunities. That's, if you don't know what that is, it's for submerged tanks or there could be something, you know, in the ground that compromises the development or the environment. And I'd like to officially charge Peter with doing a study, maybe identifying a list of properties, perhaps in priority, that we would pursue those brownfield grants with the M D Q and, and other agencies. What's the other one? Yep, so, but it was really good information and it could be impactful. They've changed it for a long time. Everybody thinks that it's just the same procedures and processes, but they had money to do an assessment and then to move on to the next phases. And it could really be impactful to get some of these properties cleaned up and developed. I do have some questions for some of the directors. I guess I'll start with Mr. Creel, if you don't mind. I'd like, first of all, Mr. Creel, if you can summarize, you know, the recent workshop or the recent planning commission meeting for the consideration of rezoning property on Old Highway sixty-seven. Just kind of summarize it in your best ability in a couple of minutes.
Okay, we had, we had received complaints from a number of neighbors out there that were concerned about some of the zoning changes that had taken place on that road. They felt that they were going more in the direction of heavy commercial or industrial. And that's not the vision that some of the neighbors had for that stretch of Old sixty-seven. So we had, the city council had charged us with conducting a public hearing to consider changing that zoning to something less intensive. We advertised N B, neighborhood business, which we felt would work very well with the property around there, which we anticipate will develop as residential. And by advertising N B, the planning commission and/or the council always have the authority to reduce the zoning intensity or the scope. So last week, we held that public hearing. There were some of the neighbors that came out to speak. They were concerned about part of the area that right now is essentially wetlands and it is, and also some of the areas that already flood that need some attention. They asked that that section of Old sixty-seven remain agricultural and just leave it agricultural, which is the least intensive zoning that we have. And if anything, maybe to consider the west end of Old sixty-seven for N B or L B or even leave it agricultural right now. I've since had a conversation with one of the speakers that came to the meeting and he suggested that maybe leaving the eastern, least eastern half as agricultural and considering L B, limited business, which is less intensive than N B on the west end, might be the best route to go. So after hearing the comments from everyone, the recommendation was made that our engineering department provide some information about that water flow runoff in that area and for us to try to get that information. So the planning commission voted to table that zoning change request until we get more information about the engineering and the runoff. And that's where it stands right now.
Okay, and in that meeting, I just want to get this on the record for people that may be watching this. It was a question, why such a big area? And you clarified that because some owners would say, well, why didn't you include my property? And we just wanted to cover that base because we can reduce it to, to a single property or a combination of however many properties there are parcels that.
And we typically do that. We typically over advertise an area like this with that understanding that y'all can always reduce it if you think the scope is too big.
Okay, thank you, Director. I got another question. Nearby, there's a subdivision, Cedar Crescent. It was developed by Elliot, I believe. And you probably know the answer, but I just want to ask it in this meeting today. There is a rain garden in a section of the subdivision. And I think it's supposed to act sort of like a mini retention pond, but it's not being maintained according to the H O A covenants. I'm assuming we don't get involved necessarily with that? Or would we get involved with something of that nature?
Well, the city, the city doesn't enforce private covenants. If there was something that was put into the covenants that said that the homeowners association would maintain it, then it would be their responsibility to maintain it. I don't know that they've established a homeowners association out there.
They have.
They have?
Yes, sir.
We can make contact with them. I can talk with Brandon Elliott and talk with the homeowners association. See, there are actually two of those out there and both of them are in the middle of cul-de-sacs. Those rain gardens, so I'll check on that tomorrow.
Okay, appreciate it. And I believe the last thing that I have on my list, just give me a second. There were some overhead cable lines that were being installed off of Brody and Hingen Lane. And I know we sent an officer out there. Did we discover anything? Because the resident was saying they were kind of riding through her property and rutting it up. I don't, I don't know how, what kind of relief or if we know who the contractor is doing that.
Well, the code officer went out and met with the homeowner. She didn't know which utility company it was. There was no way to tell from the work that was done there. They did leave ruts on private property there. I'm not sure that the city has any remedy for that. I mean, we can check into it, but I don't know that we would be the ones to file a complaint about something that they did on private property.
It would be a civil matter between the owner and the contractor. Okay, thank you, Director. Mason Drive, is Billy Ray here today? Anybody from Public Works?
He's probably out doing something on a broken water line.
Okay, well, good deal. Mike, I'll just.
They're working that, they're working that ditch.
Okay, on Mason?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. That was on my list. I was going to ask about it. So, because I originally was in Engineers Will House and then it was passed off to Public Works. And I just had it as an open item on here. Also, and I know it's rained recently, but I did have a homeowner in Destiny Plantation say that Public Works is going to try to alleviate a drainage issue. I don't know if any action has been taken on, on that.
If we're talking about the Dellinger property?
No, this is the Moore Strickland property.
Okay, well, they're, they're adjoining, I think, right there together. The Strickland gentleman, I know Billy Ray has been out there to talk to him about a remedy. The Dellinger property just had work done and had a pipe put in and they didn't, they seeded the ground but didn't sod it. So they've been told to go back and sod it. So if you hear from Dellinger, that one's being taken care of.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that update. Chief Miller, if we, if I can get just a brief update, and I'm sorry, it's been so long. It seems like it's been a month and a half since we met. But I'm just trying to get some of these items, kind of identify the action. But the dangerous curve over on Lick Skillet, is there an update on that?
We did. We conducted a traffic study there over a period of about a week. There was some, some high speed, but not as much as we would have thought. We also noticed that there's not enough speed limit signs. So our, we requested to have more speed limit signs and. We also noticed that there's not enough speed limit signs, so our, we requested to have more speed limit signs installed in there, and then we'll do some traffic enforcement, and I think that's going to take care of it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then last, I guess, but not least, Kristy, I've got a few items for you, probably the most, save the best for last. You, you mentioned earlier, or Councilman Deming mentioned the SAV, the submerged vegetation. Over in Ward Six, you know, several years ago, we basically initiated the dredging process in Ward Six. And then several of the canals, we stopped it because of that underwater vegetation or whatever. Are any of those being identified as potential canals?
Yes, we're actually working on the one that goes, we call it Sunrise Court. It goes up in behind like Michelle Drive and all. That, that, that's real big. It goes all the way to different finger bayous up in there. We're actually got Seymour working on that one right now. We also heard the DMR changed some of their revisions. Went to a wetlands class a few weeks ago. And if you remember that you couldn't dredge anywhere even ten feet within the banks, well, they've changed some of those rules too. So, it's looking very promising for some of those areas in your ward that we weren't able to do before with the SAV and the new width requirement. So, hopefully, we'll make some progress on that.
That is excellent news. I appreciate that. I've got a few more items, so sit tight for a minute. One of the big ones is the bids for AJ Holloway Sportsplex. Did those come in? Is there any update, or are y'all still assessing?
They did come in, and we're still looking at the bids. We have some options that came in under budget, so we've got some options with some alternatives that we can do, so we're, we're still kind of looking at that.
All right, perhaps if y'all have time, I'm, I'm very interested in that, and I want to be respectful of your time, Mike. But if you have a little bit of time, I'd love to maybe get a one-on-one, a little bit of an in-depth, what, what does that scope look like?
Yes, absolutely.
Has it changed?
Councilman on dredging, we do have a pending request, grant request for dredging funds from the Tylands Trust Fund. That's, you know, in play right now.
Okay.
You have a request that's in play.
Okay, I will. Thank you, Mike, for that. Ruth Sanchez, really excited about the Ruth Sanchez project. I haven't got an update recently. Can you provide anything new, or?
They're out there working right now. We've made the water tap into the utility authority line, and they're working on running that water line. As soon as that's done, they're going to tie into the low-pressure force main and run those services down.
And what exactly does that mean for all those lots there? I mean, what, I mean, now they have access to?
Now they have access to water and sewer. That is correct.
Beautiful.
Yep.
Does, does, do we have any plan for, I know I mentioned Mason Drive earlier?
Not yet. It's kind of on the list, but it's kind of far down the list right now.
It seems like it's convenient with some of that work going on to just lay that little line going out there, and, and it kind of hooks everybody up.
And this is a different subject, but Mason Road, you asked about a garbage truck turnaround?
Yes.
So, we've also got that in the works. We just gave them the PO to do that work. It's going to be all the way at the end. It's just going to be a simple little limestone turnaround, but.
And the owner, the owner's excited about that at the end?
Yes, yes.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Great progress. Uh, let's see, that might be about it, guys. I'm trying to get through this. I think that's it, but Councilman Barrett wants you to stay because he's going to start his report off with you in just a second. But I do, I've got a couple more things, and I'm wrapped up. I just want to inform everyone that Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungesser from Louisiana will be on the coast Monday, July seventeenth at eleven-thirty at Cafe New Orleans. I just want to invite my fellow colleagues on the council. If y'all can make that, I think it could be impactful. He's been leading the charge on the Louisiana end, on the spillway issues that we're all encountering, and it would be a good event. Get there early, because even when they don't have a celebrity there, it is jam-packed, that little restaurant there. And in my final comment, I know budgets are coming up, and I, I, we don't, again, we don't have a lot of time to get through this process, even if we begin tonight, but I hope that we can delve into all of the information, starting from revenues and, and going through all the expenses and, and all the projects, and, and get this budget, be the best budget that we ever put out there, Mayor. So, that, that's the goal. I know that's the goal of all of us up here, and I'm just, I'm committed to any meetings or any time, night or day, whatever it takes to get that thing done. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Give my standing ovation.
I've got several things too, but I'll try to go really fast. Kristy, Eagle Point Park, I know that we have money on hand. We have money coming from Tylands as well. I know we had, uh, electrical company doing the design, things like that. Then, I don't know, Sherry's on the pavilion side or the, the shade structure and all that. But do you know where we're at on that as far as the electrical design and all?
We are very close. So, we've got, we've got the design from them. They, they kind of helped us size the wire and that kind of stuff, but we still drew it up in-house. That is in its final review. We should have that out to bid probably within the next two weeks.
Okay.
So, that'll be ready to go.
All right, and then the other things are all Sherry, correct?
That's correct.
Glen Eagle Subdivision, and this might be you, this might be Mike, where are we at on that ditch on the backside of that where we're having those major drainage issues? Where, where, there was no ditch really. There, there should have been one, and, and there was never a ditch on the backside. I guess the west side of that subdivision, the northwest side.
We've walked it, it, you know, it, there's, there's a ditch, and there's a, I mean, there's a four-foot drop-off behind some of those houses. It's just a really bad situation, but it's all private property.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know anything about that in particular.
Mike, we'll get together on that. It's just I got, I, I keep getting emails on that and, and Facebook and all that, so.
We, we helped them to get their drainage ponds.
Yeah, the retention ponds, getting them cleaned out and access and all that. And then Kristy, the last thing, Parker's Creek, I, I know that that's been, the dredging question has been asked. I think we have something to the tune of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from Tylands available for that. Do you know when Seymour is going to engage that?
They have already started working on it. They've already done the hydrographic survey and the SAV survey, but I don't know the status of the permits. I know they've been applied for, but I'll, I'll get an update on all the dredging.
I'm just, one of the, you know, that's a very busy boat launch, and over the fourth weekend, when tide was out, there were people that were having to walk their boats in.
Yeah.
Up the, up the canal to get to their trailers, to get them out of the water because it was so low. Some of them had to leave them in the water until the, the tide came in. So, if, if, if there's any way we can push them on that, with it be in the middle of summer, we need to do that, and that's all I have. Thank you for you. Jerry in chief, after the meeting, just a couple of real quick questions. We won't deal with it now. And then for the administration, I know that we lost our main guy out in the, the north, and as I drive around, I'm very discouraged. Our ditches, our, our grass needs to be mowed terrible. There's ditches that are backing up everywhere that have not been cleaned in years. And it's, and I'm not putting, putting the blame on Public Works. I'm putting the blame on, we don't have enough manpower to do it. And so, talking about the budget, I think that it's imperative this year that we put and allocate money where we go and hire companies to take care of these things that haven't been done. Some of these ditches have not been cleaned out since the city annexed this area in nineteen ninety-nine. So, we're talking twenty-four years that some of these ditches have not been cleaned out, and it's just not fair to these residents to continue to have water backing up on them because we're not getting the ditches cleaned. And I know it's something that I've mentioned and brought up for the last two budgets before this, but I think it's imperative that when we do budgets, that we include a significant amount, and it's not just my ward that, that, that these, that these. That these ditches have, have been neglected, but we, we have to do a better job of maintaining these ditches, the trash on the side of the roads, and I know we, we did a clean sweep or something like that down on this side of the city. I mean, driving across the new bridge, going from Biloxi to Gulfport, it looks like San Francisco at some of their homeless places. There's so much junk on the bridge and, and all through. So, whatever we have to do, if it's hiring contractual services to take care of some of this stuff, we have to do a better job of keeping our, our grass mowed, our ditches cleaned, and, and the trash off of the roads. And then the last thing, and I know this isn't my area, but she's not here tonight over the weekend. I got several calls. Sort of the same type deal about Hiller Park, about the shape that it's in, and, and so I know it's not my area.
Hiller Park?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I know it's not my area, and I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes, but I did get several calls and multiple Facebook messages over the weekend about people that went out trying to utilize it, I guess, over the fourth, and, and it is just not usable in a lot of areas, so if we can do whatever, you know, to.
Let me respond on a, a couple of things regarding the cleanup and the crews necessary. You know, we did move some money because we were twenty or thirty vacancies down. We're finally caught up in, in Public Works, you know, in, in Water Department. We're getting there, and then we need to, again, as you mentioned, figure out, you know, from a seasonal contractual services, but we've got to make sure that we prioritize, and we have some of our employees working those crews. So, it almost takes, you know, one or two folks to match up with the, with the contractual crews to, to do an effective job. And we're talking about probably from April to November. So, I think there's a little bit of operations research that we need to do, and we'll do it, and we'll include that sort of thing in, you know, a management, sort of a, a, a management of those services, contractual services. So, we'll work on that.
Thank you. Mr. Deming?
I just had a couple of things I forgot. One, you don't have to get up, Ms. Labata. T and V, T Street and Brazier, at my council meeting, Ms. Beck, Gwendolyn Beck, mentioned that there was a, 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 a problem beginning at the corner of T and Brazier, and someone's gone out there, and it's sunk more, and someone's gone and put more rocks in there. I was wondering if you would just send me an email on what our, what our, what our plan for that is, how we're going to correct that and remedy it, if you just send me that or contact me via email or phone call, talk about it. And lastly, I didn't mention it because typically, Kenny, you're the one with the feel-good stories, and so you sent out an email about some tourists that came in and had a great experience in Biloxi. So, I didn't know if you wanted to, to mention that and commend Mike.
Well, yeah, yeah, so somebody sent an email to, to a majority of us, I think, and I think it was Mike Leonard that was walking around and ran into some tourists that were asking about the city, and he, I guess, opened City Hall doors and came, brought them in here and gave them a tour of City Hall and told them about the history of Biloxi and, and some of our goals and, and all that kind of stuff. And they were blown away by that hospitality and that gesture. And, you know, again, that's the thing that sets Biloxi apart, that, that just grassroots hospitality and telling everybody that you're welcome, you know, to come here, but they, they were, it made an impact on them for sure, and I'm sure they've told hundreds of people since then. So, thank you, Mike.
That concludes, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, and one quick thing, going back to the, what Kenny was talking about. Mikey Zell had an interview on TV, and that's the man that can help you big time. I don't know what the guy from Louisiana can do for you, but this man represents the state of Mississippi, and he's big on keeping that closed. All this other money we're putting out, I don't know what that's going to do, but you've got to get to the people that make those boats, and Ezel, big time, was making sure they controlled and kept it closed as long as they could. So, you know, we need to utilize him as much as anybody, because he is the man that goes up there to Washington and votes, you know? So, I thought that was a good interview with him about that. Mikey Zell. And one other thing for you to respond to that is Jerry, I know we don't allow roosters in the city. Well, we've got three of them on St. Charles, so how do you get rid of them? They're keeping up all the neighbors, one-six-six St. Charles, so I mean, you got to roost a crew, a crew or what?
Well, although the ordinance does allow people in neighborhoods to have chickens, if they're controlled, they do not allow them to have a rooster. Matter of fact, a rooster's prohibited, but that's something that's enforced by Animal Control. So, if there's a rooster waking people up or whatever, then we just need to contact Animal Control about it.
So, the chief have to do that? Chief handle, handle that. So, you can't handle that, Jerry, okay. The rooster guy, what is it now? So, we have to send the police out there to pick up these roosters? Hope they don't fight, they did downtown, you know what I mean? Anyway, so that's, that's, I wanted to make sure that was on. I got those calls today about roosters.
It wasn't one of those athletic roosters, huh? It wasn't one of those athletic roosters or anything, huh?
Gaming, gaming rooster.
All right, that's it.
All right. All right, my turn finally. I just have two things. One, I wanted to ask about the Main Street Crossing, slick and good, it's coming along. Just want to kind of get an idea of what, what, what's the date on it? Anyone? Ms. Kristy? Main Street Crossing.
And at about nine months?
And if there are any snacks to.
About nine months, and I can't remember what the actual completion date is off the top of my head. I know that they have had some periodic delays because they have to wait on CSX inspectors to be there, but I will find out what the completion date is right now and let you know.
Okay.
I can't.
Any idea about the paving?
You're talking about the.
Paving where they can pave, get across, or they're just, you're just, okay.
Yeah, they're, right now, they're just working on, they're working on the wall on the north side where, where the road's going to be elevated on that piece of property, and they're working on all of the base before they get to the paving. But I, I'll find out specifically when the paving is going to happen.
Okay, and the last thing, how's the plans going for the community center?
Yes, they are coming along. We should have something for you to look at probably in the next two weeks, maybe three weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks. I'll push them for two weeks. How about that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes my report. All right, we're going to move on to the public agenda, total of forty-five minutes. Three minutes per person strictly enforced. Is there anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am, coming on.
I'm Martha Harper. I live at three fifty-one Oak Ridge Circle. Dr. Tisdale touched on this, but we, our neighborhood is extremely frustrated with the boil water notices. I lived on St. Charles Avenue for eighteen years. I do not recall ever having a boil water notice. I have lived on Oak Ridge for three years, and I've had five boil water notices. Also, the inconsistency that Dr. Tisdale touched on about being notified. First, we got notices on our doors with the first one, when it was lifted. We got a notice on our doors and signs were posted. Oak Ridge is a semicircle. We got a sign posted on both ends of the street. Signs are nowhere to be seen these days. I've called, called Water Department, Public Works Department. Different people tell you different things. I know a contractor was hired this time. This, the work took place in June. Our sidewalks still have mud, holes in the sidewalks. You, you can't walk down parts of the sidewalks. They're marked off with tape. It's just very, very frustrating. This time with the boil water notice, we were under it for eight days. Have any of you ever had an eight-day where you had to boil your water to wash your dishes, not be able to brush your teeth? It, it's just, it, it's just terrible. I don't know what else to say. I wish, Mayor, you would ride down Big Lake Road and take a look at our street. There's also an old concrete obelisk-shaped sign that used to be a street sign. It's falling over. We have had so much work done between cable, water, and I don't know what else, on Big Lake, that there are just holes everywhere. So, I would appreciate it if all of you would ride down and, and look at that. But I'm hoping Krista, I think is her name from Public Works or Engineering, assured us that what's been done is the last of it, that we should not have any more boil water notices, but with Kiesler and their big project coming behind us, I'm very concerned about when they come online with that water system, what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else on my left? Thank you for signing in.
Um, I am Sally Smith and my family currently lives at one three two six eight Old Highway sixty-seven. Um, we purchased our land in April of twenty twenty-two. And since then, we have had so many issues with the drainage. Um, I've been dealing with Nathan um on them and every single time it rains, our yard backs up. I reached out to the city multiple times, met with Mr. Allen, had city workers out during the rains, spoke with Robert Smith, the engineer, and still nothing has been fixed nor do they have a timeframe of when the issues will be resolved. Um, we have paid thousands of dollars to have our driveway repaved, added French drains um to our land. Um, but the ditches do not drain properly, so our money is literally going down the drain. The project has been in the works now for two years with the city. The engineer's office has a bid secured. So the bid's secured, I don't understand why it's not taken care of. All the ditches are overgrown, like he stated. Um, my parents also live on Old Highway sixty-seven on the east side and their yard hasn't been cut since right after Katrina, I mean their ditches. After Katrina, there's literally trees growing out of them. That's unacceptable on any, I mean, anybody driving down our street, you can see that they're overgrown and not flowing properly. Um, Mr. Allen was also sure that our ditches had a culvert that went past to the dollar store. So our house is in front of um the neigh, the low-income neighborhood and there's no culvert. So our ditches from Old sixty-seven right before Cable Man, they go nowhere. They go into our yards. Uh, we can't even get out of our driveway when it rains. That's uncalled for. Um, so I've emailed every person on this board. I've also reached out to Nathan. Um, and he is waiting on the CAO to return your call, I believe you had told me yesterday. Um, but I just want to know what the status is. Or, I mean, I have pictures, pictures every single day it rains. Um, I've sent those in, I don't understand um why it's neglected. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone on my right? No one's in the back? Okay, we're gonna consider public citizen comments closed. All right, we're gonna move on to the policy agenda. First reading, ordinance A, Carrie?
Ordinance to amend sections ten, five, one, two, unauthorized commercial solicitation and use of harbor facilities and ten, five, two, one, four, the point get at Marina and Biloxi small craft harbor birthing rate schedule.
I'll move it. Second.
Move by Mr. Lawrence, who seconded it? Dr. Tisdale, this is the first reading. Mr. Lawrence, Dr. Tisdale, first reading. Ordinance B, second reading.
Ordinance to amend amend the land development ordinance pertaining to size of political signs and time allowed to be erected.
Barrett moved it.
All right, that was moved by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Glavin. Mr. Barrett?
So basically, our ordinance is gonna read that political signs have to be picked up within seven days after the election, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's all.
That's that's it? Okay, Ms. Glavin?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Okay, anyone else? Dr. Tisdale?
Several questions. Um, currently, I think currently the ordinance reads that the signs can be no larger than sixteen square feet and this would double that to thirty-two square feet, correct?
Yes.
No. No, what what we, what we did, I think originally the intent was just to allow for the larger signs that were in place, but at the same time, uh, Vincent made sort of a comment that, let's look at that Supreme Court opinion. And I, I had an old memo on that anyway. So I just, the way it reads now is, is that this has been rewritten to comport as best we can with the Supreme Court ruling.
Is this limited only to political signs?
Political signs or or content neutral or content-based speech? Not not advertising, though.
From time to time, we see, at least I see, uh knife shows at the Coliseum or whatever, gun shows in the public right of ways or whatever. Does it, does that fall under this ordinance?
I mean, unless it said, uh, exercise your Second Amendment rights, come to the gun gun show. I mean, that might be kind of mixed bag, but no, that's a, that's sort of a directional advertisement sign. And that wouldn't find it this.
Right, so there's no restriction on size then, under the, under this revised ordinance for political signs?
I mean, the case is not quite as broad as as some people have been led to believe, but uh it's really not worth getting into a big battle over because some cities, they have kept them more restrictive, some haven't. And the the main thing they did say is after an election, your right to make your political statement is over. So it can, it should be a requirement to pick up the signs after a certain amount of time or or appropriate.
All right, and that and that timeframe to pick up the signs is?
Seven days.
Seven days? And what hap, and somebody's got to monitor that and then enforce that. Who does that? I would have.
Code enforcement.
And that that's gonna be period, I mean, we have primaries and sometimes we have runoffs and then we have the general election. And I'm thinking, you don't have elections every week, but it's just periodically, which puts a demand on your code enforcement officers. So um what's what's the consequence if I don't pick up my sign in seven days? My sign's in seven days?
If the signs are on private property, we would write up the private property owner. Because that's what what we deal with. We we can't go onto private property and remove anything. So if there is a political sign on a piece of private property, after the seven days, we would have to write up the property owner.
Okay, and if I'm the property owner, I I either just take it, take it down and put it in the garage. If I don't, then I've gotta show up somewhere.
It would be a code violation like any other.
Okay, so so then this thought hits me because I see in my, in my neighborhood, nothing wrong with it, but I still, I see Trump signs, okay? And that's, he hadn't run in two years. He may be coming up. What do we do with those? That's a touchy subject, but.
If it's on private property, uh, if we know where it is, we'll go out and address.
It will fall under the term, the terms of this revised ordinance.
I guess it depends what year it is. If it's a Trump twenty twenty, then then you could.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have a date on it.
I think that's valid. I think that's political speech.
So, right, but we're how many days from the general, the presidential election, for example?
That doesn't matter.
Doesn't make any difference.
We can't regulate the time according to this Supreme Court order.
And did I hear you right? You said size doesn't matter? Is that what you said?
Uh, so, so I could leave that sign, I could leave that sign up as as long as whatever because it's my First Amendment right to do so. But we're gonna tell Councilman Deming that he's gotta take down his elect, Deming sign within seven days. Is that accurate?
Wins his election?
It'll be, if he wants to put one up tomorrow, I mean, the election's in twenty twenty-five. Any problem with that? I'm being facetious to make a point.
The Trump sign, if if we can look at the Trump sign and see that it was obviously one from the last election, then it would fall under the seven days removal category and we could address it as that. If it's obviously a sign that's been put up for the next year election, then we wouldn't be able to regulate it. So we'd just have to, it it would be an argument and we run into those all the time.
So if I put up a Tisdale sign in my front yard tomorrow, I'm running in twenty twenty-five for reelection, it's the same sign that I used the first go-around in twenty thirteen. Y'all don't know that, but I know that. I mean, I I just, I I don't know, this just seems re, are we, are we, are we discussing the number of angels on the head of a pin? I kind of, I kind of think we are. But on the other hand, you're gonna be on the firing line, Jerry. You're in, you're, you and your employees because this is an issue you're trying to enforce. So so if I don't take down my election sign when I've been notified, then what happens?
Uh, we could, we could cite you and we could cite the property owner wherever the signs are located.
Okay, and good, you cited me and a month goes by, now what happens?
Court.
I mean, practically speaking, if uh most, most candidates, if you give them a call, they'll take their signs down. If somebody doesn't want to and they're in office, they're gonna hear it from the, from the people that voted them in. Take your signs down. If you wanted to sign up, did you said, I love Tisdale? I mean, that's political speech. You're, it's, it's fair game.
Yeah.
Under the broadest reading of this, of this uh Supreme Court ruling. So should we get into how detailed could we be or what could we try to get away with? Let somebody challenge it? No, it's not worth it. It's not worth the effort.
Well, what got us here today, as I understand it, if if my perspective is not an accurate one, please let me know, is that uh when we put up political signs, we had something in place. Some signs were out, signs were out early, signs were bigger than what the ordinance allowed. And then we were behind the 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 curve, if you will, and trying to get a handle on it. So what we've done is expand the timeline and apparently there's no limit on the, on the size of the sign that you want to have.
Uh, we we were due to do, this really could have been done the week after that Supreme Court ruling came out. It just, it just was not a pressing issue. Somebody wanted to make it a pressing issue, so we just took care of it.
Okay, and that that ruling was in two thousand and eighteen, which stray electron, forgive me, but it, there are a number of ordinances I think that need to be revised, but I don't know that we have any organized, are making an organized effort to update some of these things until they become an issue. And I think that puts us at a disadvantage. We're behind the eight ball trying to do things correctly. You know, that.
It's amazing that no one complained until we decided to extend the timeframe and expand the size of the signs.
Well, it's.
When someone stepped.
It's all fun and games until it's not fun and games anymore. I mean, and I'm thinking another stray electron is a noise ordinance. Here we are, chief, we gotta enforce that to a well. I don't know, it's kind of vague in some areas. I mean, these are the kind of things that we, we just need to, the administration needs to follow up on. I mean, annually, look at some of these things and if we gotta contract it out to update these things. And the uh currently it's sixty days, but this would go to a hundred and twenty-eight days before.
We cannot regulate the time. That's uh, that was part of the decision that Peter was talking about in the beginning, is that we can't regulate the time and we can't regulate the size. So the only thing that we can do is we can make sure that the signs are maintained and that they're removed within seven days after the election.
But if there's no, but if there's no timeline when you can put them up, giving you a timeline to take it down, I'm run, once I'm elected, the next day I'm running for reelection. I'm putting my sleeve in.
We're right there with you. It just, you know, it uh, it it creates a lot of uh other problems for us too because these signs tend to get in our drainage system, you know, these small signs and block our drainage system and some other things too. So uh you would think that uh the court would have made a decision that we would have some authority over this, but uh they did and they went the opposite direction.
I remember the first time I ran for election, some of my signs were in rights of way and they were duly taken up by our retiree, Tom, stick to the letter of the ordinance, Sepola. And I went down and I picked them up.
That's right.
From behind your office. Do we do that?
We still do that, yes. If, the the only time a sign can be placed on the city right of way is if the city gives them permission to do that. Uh, if it's a um, an event that's going on that the city is a participant in, then they're typically allowed to put signs on the right of way. But uh uh election signs and advertising, commercial advertising, can't be put there without the city's permission.
Do you, do you have the manpower to monitor this stuff during election season, Jerry?
Uh, we do the best we can. Each person has a assigned area. I have one person that's assigned to Highway ninety, which is typically where the the biggest problems come in. And uh the spa and hot tub signs that were put out over the weekend for the Coliseum, I had my guys first thing Monday morning to go out, they'd already been removed.
At the intersection of uh Jim Money Road, south side of Pass Road is a famili, a a favorite spot.
Very popular.
For electioneering. And I'm thinking, I don't know, there's a billion and one signs right there now. It, but that's on private property, correct?
Private property, yes, sir.
Well, I don't know who owns that property. I I I don't know that it makes a difference. I'm just wondering if they have to have permission. How do you verify that somebody has permission? I don't know, this just, all right, my head's about to explode. So I'll pass it on to Mr. Deming. Thank you.
I can't imagine anything you did not cover.
Question.
Okay, go ahead.
Real quick, Peter?
Yes.
On uh the signs, the Supreme Court with the ruling in the writing was on permanent sign, not either temporary political sign. So the ruling, did it take place for both things or just the permanent signs?
Well, the ruling was actually a uh, a city that said, we don't want any signs advertising uh much of anything. And this was like a church uh with a sign about when their church services were or or like a swap meet they would have or garage sale the church would have. So, you know, the city wrote up the church and then the church challenged it. And from there, I mean, there's no specific ruling that says political signs can't be taken down before the election. But they went from there and started making these broad comments about any restrictions on political speech or political campaign that violates your right to self-expression and First Amendment rights. So there's not a specific, that Supreme Court ruling isn't specifically about political signs. It really dealt with, and you have some homeowners associations in some cities. I think, for example, Diamond Head, you can't even put a uh, they may have a rule, you can't put a political sign up in the yard, period. Or you can't go door to door, stuff like that. So I mean, there's just different cities that have done different things. Once again, we're leading the, we're leading the front of everybody else having a pretty much a wide open sort of ordinance that complies with the Supreme Court's order.
I mean, I don't, I don't think they put control on temporary signs. I think that's where you're missing the boat here. You're talking about permanent sign, temporary sign, you can control temporary sign. There you can.
Okay.
So, no, I'm just saying, Supreme Court did not say anything about temporary political sign at all.
Well.
That was never, so I mean, you get the thing, let the, let's look at it. Now, I think he opened up a can of worms here for nothing. I think there should be control on political sign. And they don't really say you cannot control political sign in the ruling. So you gotta pay attention what they actually discussed when they actually started all that.
I'm comfortable with what we're doing here. I'm very comfortable with it.
Say again?
I'm comfortable with what we're doing here.
That that don't make it right, just you're comfortable with it.
I I disagree. I disagree.
I'm comfortable with a lot of things, that don't mean anything.
Right.
That's it.
Okay, before I go to Dr. Tisdale for the fifteenth time, I'm uh Nathan Barrett.
How how many complaints do we get about political signs?
The usual things, uh.
I mean, is it?
Not many.
Is it like y'all are at the desk all day answering the phone?
Very few. What?
Okay.
What would happen typically over the years is that uh somebody would complain that uh there's a sign over here that's too big. So we'd go out and investigate it. But I, this year, this year, I'm not aware of, but maybe two or three complaints for this whole election season.
And for the most part, when these elections are over, other than a few stray signs, they get picked up, right?
That's right, yeah.
All right.
Okay. Dr. Tisdale, I couldn't imagine you having anything else to say, but I'm gonna yield over to you.
Sure, so do we pick and choose which ordinance is to enforce?
I mean, what uh?
I don't know, that's, that's a question for you to answer, Jerry. That's, that's the mayor and the attorney. Do we cho, pick and choose which ordinance is to enforce? So if if it's on the books, we should follow that. We should monitor it, enforce it, and then the consequence, whatever uh is on the books for that ordinance, then we follow through procedurally. Right? That's, that's what we're supposed to do. If it's not a good ordinance, get it off the books.
Yeah.
If we've got to revise the ordinance, we revise the ordinance. But that, that was my first question. Do we pick and choose? I assume the answer is no. So regardless of, with all due respect to my colleague up here, you know, it doesn't make any difference. you know, it doesn't make any difference how many complaints we get. Either we enforce the ordinance or we don't. And from Mr. Lawrence's perspective, on temporary signs, could we revisit this proposed revision from that perspective? Of just looking at limiting or putting some restrictions on temporary signs? Maybe that's a better way to go. It's just a thought.
So if, I mean on that real quick, so if a house doesn't sell in a certain amount of time, you gotta take your for-sale sign down? But if you did, it just doesn't work. It's a temporary sign.
The only way to put a restriction on it would be to require temporary signs to be registered, right? And then you would be facing a restriction on political speech anyway. So I think it would be, it would, it would be a conflict of interest with the ordinance, so.
Yeah, a lot of these fall into the category of signs that are allowed without a permit. Political signs, for example, for-sale signs for houses, all of those fall into that category of permits are not required.
That's a good point. These are exceptions to the sign permit requirement is what we're dealing with here. Certain signs you are, you do have to go get a permit for.
I guess my last question would be, all we're talking about is political signs, right?
No. You can't do that.
We're not talking about how signs, talking about they're pertaining to this political signs in a loud time erected.
Right, but, but political signs are a form of expression.
Yes.
So that's, that's what makes this a sticky wicket. I just think we can do better if we approach it from Mr. Lawrence's perspective and what he outlined. So I'd like to see us look at something that's rewritten from that perspective. I mean, in terms of this election, signs already up, signs already out there. You know, forget this election, but for the next election coming up, which is when I put my elect Tisdale sign in the front yard tomorrow. So, I just think we can do better than what's here. It may take a little time, but we've got a little time, I think. That's it, honest, across my heart.
But to answer your question, it's a sign that advertises a political campaign or content-based political speech. So you do have, you know, what that is, that's a phrase that was used in the Supreme Court ruling. Content-based political speech. So that could be, if you support certain propositions that are out there, or certain referendums. That's a political type speech. It wouldn't include, you know, come down here to my store. Just have a big sign like that, without a permit.
Got it, got it.
So what was the rest of the ruling that you're reading off of? What was the rest of the ruling attached to that, about political signs? That has some more, that has a lot more wording to that than what you just, oh, you just read that. So we just can't deal with political sign, what you're saying, so why is this even on the books? You said you can't do anything about it. So we got, we got two different ways y'all talking there. Either you take it off the book, don't do anything about it, or put some type of control on it.
Well, it's a sign allowed without a sign permit. I think certain signs you would still wanna have a permit.
That's permanent signs. This is not permanent signs. That's the difference right there. That's a big difference.
If you never take a sign out of your yard, it's permanent.
No, you gotta have a permit to do that. You can't just say, "I'm gonna leave it in my yard." No, it don't work that way.
Well, that'd be permanent.
Jerry Cruz gotta go out there and make sure that's a permanent sign. Total different game, about right, when you do a permanent sign than do a temporary political sign. Two different worlds you're dealing with.
Okay, we still, we have a motion by Mr. Barrett. We had a second by Glavine. All hearts satisfied on comments? I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? One, two, three, four. Against, one, two. That's Tisdale and Lawrence. Ah, we finally made it through. Okay, policy agenda C, Carrie?
Ordinance authorized a change in zoning from neighborhood business to regional business, to regional business for one-two-nine-zero-zero Old Highway sixty-seven.
Okay, I didn't have who moved in second.
I moved it.
Okay, Mr. Barrett, and second by Mr. Glavine.
I don't have any questions. The applicant and the owner both do great work. Both business owners of multiple businesses in the community, so I have no questions and no issues with this.
Okay, Mr. Glavine?
The only thing I would add, I'll echo a little bit what Nathan said. This is kinda just down the road, just a piece from the new section of my ward. And this is one of the areas close to where we were considering rezoning for neighborhood-friendly businesses. And this certainly meets the criteria on that. And I don't think anybody really has a problem. However, it does have to go to DRC, have a drainage plan-
It will, yes.
And meet that criteria, so it doesn't intrude on any, anybody that's in and around it from a flooding standpoint or any other intrusion.
That's correct.
Okay, anyone else?
Just one, one question. It was regional business already with neighborhood business.
It's split zone.
You could have two, that was a split zone, so now you're gonna make it all regional business?
Regional business.
What did they gain with regional business?
Well, they'll be allowed to put the boat and RV storage facility on there. It requires RB zoning.
So that's, that's it?
That's what it is. They have to get to RB zoning to have, to be able to develop the boat and RV storage facility. So that's why they're asking for the zoning. And typically, split zone properties, we always try to clean those up. So this is a very reasonable request. If you'll look at your zoning map in your packet, there's RB zoning all around this, so.
So, he was on the neighborhood business part, the man wants to change it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hey, I'm gonna call, you got a question, Dr. Tisdale?
No, sir.
Okay. Call for a question. All in favor? Okay, six, zero, motion Carrie. We're gonna move on down to resolutions, resolutions.
You should have gave that up a long time ago.
Alright. Resolution D, Carrie?
Resolution to appoint Nathan Barrett as president of the Biloxi City Council.
I need a motion on that.
All motion, thank you.
Mr. Glavine, need a second? Second, Dr. Tisdale, any questions? All in favor? Okay, five, zero, motion Carrie. Mr. Barrett has stepped out, take care of personal matter. I guess we've taken too long. I'm gonna go ahead and take Carrie on this, the next one, former vice president to take over. I need a motion on, well, Carrie E.
Resolution to appoint Robert L. Deming III as vice president of the Biloxi City Council.
I need a motion on Mr. Deming.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Tisdale, second. I'll do the second. Any questions? All in favor? Five, zero, motion Carrie. Mr. Deming, I'm officially handing you this gavel until Mr. Barrett get back.
I should have made him sweat.
Thank you. Carrie, if you would, resolution F, please.
Resolution vacating an unimproved right of way running north and south between Pine Grove Avenue and Beachview Avenue.
So moved.
Removed by Paul Tisdale.
I'll second.
Seconded by Felix Sines. Mr. Tisdale, your first discussion?
Yeah, this is an easement that runs between Beachview and Pine Grove Avenue. It's ten feet wide. I don't know, it's about a thousand twenty feet long, basically. That parcel, or that easement would be split with five feet being added to each resident's backyard. That'd be accurate, Jerry. So, that's it. I'm for it. Don't have a problem with it.
Councilman Gines?
Okay, what did he say it?
Any other discussion on the council? All in favor? Those opposed? I'm assuming, Mr. Barrett, you're not voting?
Oh, I'm sorry. What item are we on?
Item number F, resolution vacate.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, yes.
So motion carries unanimously.
Item G?
Resolution granting conditional use for a bail bondsman's office for Chief fifty-one A Main Street.
I move it, second.
Any discussion?
Sorry.
No, I'm all good with it. Bail bondsman, another business in the area. Thank you.
Tisdale?
I'm fine, thank you. Anyone else?
One question, Jerry. Why does it have to have a condition of use? I mean, it's not allowed anywhere else but one place?
The zoning is NB, and NB, of course, is typically businesses that are located right next to a residential neighborhood.
Right.
And because this is a bail binding agency, the city council, the planning commission, city council need to have control over where next to a residential neighborhood a bail bondsman can be, because there's the question of that undesirable element hanging around, you know. So, this, this is going in that little building next to the barber shop just south of the church. So it's not really a whole lot of residences around there.
About the condition of use.
That's what it is.
And if it go off the rails, we can pull it back.
Okay. Yeah, well, that don't happen, so anyway. That sounds good as meat and-
Any other discussion?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, all in favor? Six, zero. Okay. Item H?
Resolution granting minor subversion final plot approval for twenty-seven-ninety Beach Boulevard.
So moved.
Alright, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, this is the old Olive Garden site, and it's being divided into two parcels. The front parcel is the gas station convenience store. And this parcel to the north of it will be used for some future use. And I'm good with that. So, I don't know exactly what that future use is. People have a lot of proposals and change their mind and everything. But hopefully, hopefully it'll be something related to some sort of residential development, perhaps. We'll see. So I'm good with it. Thank you.
I'm good with it.
Question. Who proposed that? That's just wanting to do with the original convenience store. Who put this up?
It's the same owners that are proposing this, although, you know, this is just a very long piece of property, and the convenience store is only using half of it. So, they're dividing it into the other half. And they've shown us some preliminary ideas for what they wanna do on the property north of the convenience store, but they haven't made an official presentation to DRC yet.
They own all that property?
Yes, sir.
They do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Same owner.
It's basically, George, if you'd been to Olive Garden, all that parking in the back, that's it. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Okay. All in favor? Six, zero. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
A mood.
I'll second.
Alright, we'll start with George. Any questions? Or maybe I should save you for last, huh?
Do what?
Nah, go ahead.
Well, I'm not gonna take as much time as Kenny did. First thing I'm bringing up is this add-on is where they put twenty-five-hundred for the old Keith, the birthday party. I just think that's a little excessive, you know, for that. I mean, a lot of people have birthdays tomorrow, July the twelfth, you know. Oh, George O'Leary will be a hundred and sixty-six years old tomorrow. I'll be eighty-two tomorrow. Jerry O'Keefe was ninety-six, you know. So there's a lot of people have those birthdays. So I don't understand what the, give them twenty-five-hundred, that's a lot. I'd suggest that we cut that to a thousand dollars. I talked to the mayor about that. He said he was good with the thousand, so I'm proposing that if y'all wanna pull that one and vote on a separate.
Just make a motion to amend the language.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend that to one thousand dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
So moved. Seconded.
Alright, any discussion?
Well, I'm a big fan of the old Keith, so I'm opposed of it. I think we need to celebrate every birthday we can get.
Yeah, right.
The best way we can do it, so.
I've done a lot of them.
I'm not in favor of doing it. That's just me personally. Those are my comments on it.
Any other discussion? Alright, so you're voting on this now, right? Okay, so, gonna vote on what item?
On the amendment.
Vote on amendment.
Okay. Okay, so we're voting on the amendment to this item. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Alright, five to one, Felix in opposition. Alright, George, next item?
Yes. On this one, the T that y'all substituted for, what did you actually do with that? What did you, you said it was substitute? I kinda looked at the thing. I don't know where we changed, what we, what we did there, what we substituted there.
We didn't have the grant application prepared before the agenda deadline, and we have to have these approved. We have a July thirty-one deadline to get the applications submitted. So, but we didn't have the application finalized before the agenda deadline. So basically, we just substituted the applications, so that y'all will have those.
So you're still asking for the two million, or whatever, everything's the same?
Everything's the same. It's just the actual application is now attached with the substitute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I ask a question on that item?
Sure.
While we're there. And do I understand this correctly on item T? Are we pledging the port millage that we get from the county? That's accurate, and so, and that's usually about-
We're not, we're not committed to that, though. We're just pledging that amount of money.
Right. I mean, that's the fund, that's the local funding source.
A local funding source.
For this, so we're gonna do that, if it's four-hundred-and-twenty-five per quarter, we're talking about, to get three million, we're talking about pledging seven quarters worth for that. Do I understand that correctly?
Seven quarters. Four-twenty-five would be one quarter.
Right, but we're, I think in the application, we're coming up with three million, we're asking for how much? Three million.
Million.
And are we also gonna match that with another three million? And looking at the application, I'm trying to understand, is that accurate?
Yes, we would, we were gonna match that. I don't know that the actual matching fund has been necessarily determined. It sounds like that that may still be up in the air. And we won't have to, we won't have to make that decision until we actually get the application anyway. We'll have to come back to y'all for-
Right, and the only reason I mention that, that's almost two years worth of port millage from the county, and we've got another item with, again, where we're pledging port millage, correct?
Right, right. And I will say, we do, when we put these applications in, we put a lot of applications out there, and we don't know what's gonna be approved.
Exactly, it's hit or miss.
Yeah, so there, you may see some duplicates of some of that matching, but we won't know until we actually, if they award us the grant.
Just wanted to be sure I understood that. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Lawrence, go ahead.
The millage, that's what it's used for anyway, to redo the, right? The millage from the county is to support the harbor and repair the harbor. So that's what the money's used for, correct? I mean, that's what we're doing, if we get the grant.
Right, right.
Okay. And on the W, I know where you're leasing the property, Southern Porter, the Mercy Cross property. Do you plan on doing anything with it? Cause they keep saying they might do something in the future.
You know, one year, to make it legal and so forth, I think we've been landing a helicopter there, right, chief? On Mercy Cross property, and we may do some improvements to remove some of those poles that inhibit, you know, the things. But we'll have a municipal purpose. I think that's what, is what we're asking for the utility authority to approve. So we'll just be official.
So, that's just kinda making it official, that we're using it.
For whatever purposes, you know, municipal purposes, that's what I think it'll be up before the utility authority, the twentieth? Is that right? So it will be an equivalent agenda item on the utility authorities thing, too.
And I know we, this DD, we took over the motorized parking garage. We built it anyway with five million dollars. So we're gonna have added expenses, or maybe we can create some revenue from it.
Revenue, alright, revenue.
Correct.
Revenue, not expensive.
Yeah, we will not be, we will not be charging. We're not able to, to start charging yet. We don't have the mechanical arms and so forth in place. So, as it stands right now, for this, at least the next round of games, it'll be free parking, just to let people get used to-
But to- But the...
getting in there, so free and 23 is the term we're using.
Okay, but I mean, the 350...
Not gonna charge, eh, eh, for the rest of this baseball season, while we get in place the plans for charging.
So the 350 parking places, consistent garage, is all belong to the city now, so it won't be anything with the employees, with the Boerivage, so whatever we do, we control everything.
We control it.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence, could I add a few questions?
Sure.
Here on this topic, um, do we have any idea or projection on what the revenue is we might receive from that? And?
Have to see how, how, how people use it, or the, whether they're gonna use it or if they're gonna still continue to park, you know, save $10 and park under the I-110.
That marquee sign was working, we could advertise that, just saying. And it says that the Boerivage can use, is permitted to, uh, I guess, use the parking garage for five days? I'm assuming that's for special events, did I read that correctly, Peter?
Well, they, they'll have like, certain days out of the year, first they have to give us 30 days, at least 30 days notice, but, say for example, New Year's Eve may be a very busy time at the Boerivage, and they wanted to have the flexibility on certain days?
Sure.
To send their employees back into the parking garage if the guests were gonna be using the main garage.
And I would assume on those five days, we don't charge them anything, would that be accurate? Or do we charge them like we would charge everybody else?
I, I think that'd be free of charge, but it, it may be, um, I think we'd probably give them a code to the, uh, a special code, one-time code for the, for the arms.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
That's it for me.
I have none.
None. Mr. Demming?
None.
Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, on item... AA, this is, uh, the, uh, time clock plus, are, are we, currently it's used in the Port Administration, Public Works, Engineering, and Parks and Recreation Department, uh, are there any plans to expand it into other departments? Or? So, eh, so, at some point in the very near future, everybody's gonna be using time, okay? Are there any kinks to work out, I'm thinking you have some folks who work in the?
Always, yeah.
Okay, have we worked them out yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Most like ordinances, you know, you gotta...
Don't get me started. Alright, on the item CC? And, uh, this goes back to use of the port millage, this happens to be the Sherman Kane and Commercial Dock, and the improvements there, uh, the, the request is for two million, w- we also said that we had come up with some port millage money for that in the application, that'd be roughly a million dollars, two quarters. I wanted to be sure I understood that, and then, let's see, what's HH? Sanger Theater Interior Repairs, do we have any kind of estimated cost to that on the interior?
We're still, uh, in the mode of looking for an operator that would come in and lease the, uh, facility and operate it, schedule shows and so forth, so we can't really make any final decisions on interior.
Are we advertising for an RFP, a request for proposals? I know we had done that sometime back.
I asked, and we've actually interviewed a, a couple of folks, and what I'm waiting on, uh, from those folks to get and identify, uh, the items that needed to be added, to bring in, you know, the, the performance, uh, things like, uh, digital boards, uh, uh, rigging, uh, those kinds of things that need to be added, based on conditions, you know, we revised, so, trying to get a list, and it could be, you know, one, two, three million dollars, but the plan is to get going as fast as we can, uh, with, with some things, that we might not need the digital, some of the sound and those improvements, but we're trying to identify the things that would be nice to have inside, but that would be, you know, fixtures and, and furnishings and so forth.
The exteriors, all the work?
Done.
Is gonna be done on the exteriors, is done. I noticed that there was, uh, on the Barks building improvement, it looks like the roof has come in, or something, a wall collapsed or something, that's next door, just south of the Sanger.
They're working on it, yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, so, anyway, but, I mean, that...
I didn't mean to do that.
What are we gonna do with you? But, eh, that didn't have any effect on, I mean, no damage to the Sanger Theater or anything, was, okay? That's all, thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing.
And the only question I have is going back to the parking garage, did you say that we're not gonna charge anything this year for this season?
For baseball.
For baseball games.
So there's, there's no way we could just, I mean, there's 300 and something spots, there's no way we could hire an attendant? I mean, we're, that's, if we charged $5 a ga, uh, to park, that's $1,500 a game, if, if we fill it up.
Well, by the...
I mean, it, it wouldn't cost nearly that to put someone there to man that, that gate.
We could, by the time we get, get all that coordinated, I mean, their season ends basically in September, and the thought was?
Okay.
You get people in the habit of, hey, it's nice and cool in that place, it's covered, that, that next year there's more of a, more of a run, you give them a...
I didn't know their season ended that early.
But also on the weekends, I mean, we think there's a, there's a market for somebody that would like to, I mean, it's right across the street, park on that first or second level instead of going up seven floors, so...
Yeah, we could utilize that for parking for First Friday as well.
Absolutely.
Coast, all that, yeah, okay.
Marty Grohl, it'd be a big opportunity for Marty Grohl right there, too.
That's all I have, I'll, um, ask for a vote on the consent agenda, then I'll ask for any exceptions, all in favor? Any exceptions?
None.
None? Alright, six, no one?
None.
Alright. Alright, we'll move on to code enforcement, Mr. Crell? Hopefully, all these have been resolved, huh?
We have, uh, we have five that are still in violation, and one that I'm gonna ask for an extension on, so...
Okay, good.
Uh, item A, Jeremy Shone and Amanda Andrews, 333 Rodenberg Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Alright, anyone here to speak on behalf or against, uh, Jeremy Shone and Amanda Andrews? Anyone here to speak on behalf or against Cheryl Michelle Evans? If not, this pick case is closed?
Item D, Jean P. Grace Estate, 1760 Vaughan Street, that case has been resolved. Item E, Cassandra G. Hicks, uh, 11965 Sandbar Lane, I'd like to ask for 30 days on that one. Uh, we talked with the owner this week, and they're coming to take care of some of the problems on that building.
Alright, I'll make that.
I'll move that.
Alright, second, alright, all in favor?
Item F, Omar J. Hickory, 1744 James Buchanan Drive, that case has been resolved. Item G, Teresa Hudson, 787 Montavista Drive, that case has been resolved. Item H, ISP Properties LLC, 1628 Lewis Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item I, Mock Six Holding LLC, 1608 Gordon Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item J, Angela LaSheria Richburg, 263 Nichols Drive, that case has been resolved. Item K, Tony J. Skermetta Estate, 328 St. Mary Boulevard, that case has been resolved. Item L, Southwind Owner LLC, 1655 Irish Hill, that case has been resolved. Item M, Southwind Owner LLC, 1667 Irish Hill Drive, that case has been resolved. Item N, Donna J. Staley et al., 471 Benaki Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item O, Adrian Wheel, 1755 Garden Park, this property's still in violation.
Alright, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Adrian Wheel?
Let me ask a question, if I might, Jerry, where is, um, Garden Park, what, what is that close to?
Garden Park is just across the railroad track off of Rodenberg, it's, uh, one that, that loops around, um...
I know where it is.
In there, yes, sir, and there is a homeless camp in here that really needs cleaning up, so, um...
If there's no one here to speak on or against, this case is closed?
Item P, Raul A. Zaragoza, 747 Highland Drive, that case has been resolved. Item Q, Marion D. Hill, 214 Elmer Street, this property's still in violation.
60 days, didn't do, didn't we give us 60 days?
No, sir, the, uh, the owner will not contact us, and there's a renter in the house, we had to take the pictures. The reason I asked for the extension the last time is because we couldn't go on to the property to get pictures of the back, we had to get permission from the neighbor, the neighbor gave us permission to go on there, but this place in the rear is in, uh, really bad shape.
Okay, anyone here to speak on behalf or against Marion D. Hill? Alright, if not, this case is closed?
Item R, Ha Lin and Nai Nguyen Van, 240 Laurel Court, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Ha Lin or Nai Nguyen Van? If not, this case is closed?
Okay. Item S, Sheila Abear, 622 Cop Street, this case has been resolved.
Alright, thank you. We'll now move to the routine agenda, I have a motion?
I move that.
Second.
Alright, George?
Well... You've been sitting here this whole meeting, waiting to give us enough of good news.
Well, the good news is, we expect to see you for another birthday, so that's excellent news, congratulations, councilman. Uh, on the Mema front and on our funding, there's nothing in the Mississippi PA website at this time, we're having a conference call with them tomorrow morning, what's taking them a little while to get us some funding is what we call the reconciliation change orders, that's for 1.2 million dollars, it's a little bit of extra money for monies that we've already paid our contractor, so it's a little different from the advances we typically get from Mema, so they have to do a lot more reviewing to confirm if all those monies and the costs that we, and the monies we spent on are eligible for reimbursement, um, so, by our next council meeting on the 18th, hopefully I will at least be able to advise that the 1.2 million is in the system, uh, and that's part of our conference call tomorrow morning.
But we still stand ahead of the game.
Yes, sir, currently we're still 60 days in advance, we will have, uh, two pay applications this month for close to a million dollars, uh, and we will then get the next advance beyond that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, all in favor to have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright, first George, second Pete, um, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah.
We adjourn every meeting now?
Yeah, we gone.
Alright, all in favor? It's first, um, Lawrence, second.
That's something new. Quit doing, uh, recess. So we adjourn every meeting, so everything, everybody has the same thing in line, you can't have this one open, that was what they were saying, you got the... Chief? Sent you the, the rooster, man, you looking good? So what do we have?